All right, I call this meeting to order, the May 6th, 2024 deliberative meeting agenda. In attendance, myself, Council Lady West, Councilman Davis, by phone, we have Councilman Mr. Solicitor?
Your Honor, members of council, members of the public, welcome to the May 6th, 2024 deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. Following resolutions are before council for consideration today. Resolution 35, authorize entering an agreement for the sale of commercial real estate and its addendum for the purchase of West Second Street, Route 291, and Lloyd Street for the purchase price of $1,375,000 from Chester First Partnership in as-is condition. Resolution 36, authorize the appointment of Joan Neal as the Open Records Officer for the City of Chester. Resolution 37, authorize independent due diligence reviews of city health and benefits programs and risk transfer program. Resolution 38, authorize the transfer of 106-130 East Sixth Street to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester for redevelopment purposes following settlement with the Chester Upland School District and delivery of DD. Resolution 39, authorize award of the street light maintenance and repair for the City of Chester bid to Lenai Electric Corporation, 1020 Andrew Drive, West Chester, Pennsylvania, 19380, for a 24-month period at the low bid price of $14,400, which does not include additional costs for services beyond street light maintenance and repair. Resolution 40, authorize the award of the IT hardware and software quotes for ARPA projects 12, 13, 14, and 15, with the remaining funds to be paid from the general funds. Resolution 41, authorize the preparation of the specifications and advertisement of bids for the management services for the operation of Memorial Park Swimming Pool and the 2024 Summer Food Program. Resolution 42, authorize the preparation of the notice the City is accepting employment applications for the 2024 Summer Food Service Program. There are no ordinances for introduction today, and that would conclude the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Counselor, any questions or comments on the agenda items?
So, Mr. Solicitor, you've gone over the R35, the agreement for the sale of the commercial real estate at 291 and Lloyd. You've looked at that agreement?
Yes.
And everything's in order, so why don't you...
It remains in order to accomplish what the City needs to accomplish.
Can we get some specifications on the authorized award of the IT hardware and software quotes for ARPA projects 12, 13, 14, and 15? I would like to know exactly what those are, and why is the remaining balance being paid from the general funds and not ARPA money?
So, this has already come before you guys. What it is, is an amendment to a wording, and they're going to change the word from "is" to "through" because it's Tech Guys, and we're actually buying, the equipment was on the previous several council meetings before, we're buying the, where's Tracy, is he here? Oh, Tracy. The Cisco equipment we're buying.
Here. So, Cisco is going to be purchased through, will be purchased through Tech Guys. They are like an authorized manufacturer, authorized distributor for Cisco. You can't buy it directly from Cisco, so we have to use one of their authorized partners. Tech Guys is one of those partners. So, they're going to be doing that purchase, or we're going to be purchasing it through Tech Guys for all of the networking and security equipment that's going to come in-house.
Okay, and do we have a specific number of, I guess, a specific number of balance of the funds that'll be coming out of the general fund? Like, what number? How much is that quote?
That is the 14,4. And that's already been budgeted in the budget. So, you'll see IT budget already has a budget line item. We just paid some of it out of ARPA, and we're paying the others out of, they already allocated IT hardware budget line item in general fund.
Okay.
So, that's, but again, this has come before you guys before, it's just we had to amend the wording in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
How many open records officers do we have?
We have the one and only, right now, Ms. Candace Newsom. But we're moving that over to Ms. Joan Neal to handle that now.
So, she's going to be the only open records officer, Joan Neal?
Right now, yes.
And what responsibility will Ms. Newsom be, will then be transitioning over to?
She's still going to be handling everything with you guys as well. She just won't be doing, can we have more than one listed on there, or just one? At the state?
So, I have all, well, to me, I think that I would have all open records up to May 1st, that's when it's like, first I'd be, but, so all of them are already had, I'm finishing up. Any ones that were on my desk, I'm going to train her to start her, should move forward.
Okay, and as you're training her to be the new open, excuse me, open records, what will your new title officially be as an employee of City Hall?
I'm the City Clerk.
Okay, so...
I'm still the City Clerk.
Still the City Clerk, that's what I...
That's just a job that's being taken, given to Joan Neal.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. That's what I was asking for, that clarification on language, I guess.
And when the open records officer is not here, who handles the open records requests?
They sit till they, the open records officer comes in.
Oh, they do?
Yes, because they can either be on the computer, they can ask me that, okay, or inform her back to me.
So, you're the only one right, up until May 1st, that was doing the...
I have some on my desk now, but I did not start them because I would probably need to finish them. So, there was a whole new way to start Joan Neal and training them, and her move forward.
Because I know you were not here the last council meeting, and then you came back Thursday of last week?
Monday.
Monday of last week? But you, did you do any open records requests when you came back?
No, but I'm familiar with one of them that I, if you're referencing that...
You know, you know where I'm going.
About the information was given to me, I put back, I was questioning one of that, I'm going to make sure that all that information is correct, so when Joan does it, it goes out for it.
Oh, but I thought it was already done because it was in the newspaper.
It was part of my emails. So, that came in, I think, on the 25th of April, I wasn't here. I was in the car, I said on the 24th, I didn't come back until the 29th. So, I had a hundred and some emails. I came into a conversation at the end, and I understand what had happened until I talked to Joan Neal, so I had to go and find that open records and put it to the side. But I'm talking with, well, sent an email to Mr. Kuport, he sent me some information. Now, I'm questioning something else, but I'm going to make sure that that there is taken care of, and I say none of them opened correctly, so that that can move forward and be taken care of.
Because somebody must have did you a favor, and they answered an open records request on two of my emails, and I was wondering how that came to be.
I can't answer that. That open records that your prior records do is sitting on my desk, it doesn't have a date on it or anything yet. I'm just getting the information so they can go out.
But it was in the newspaper.
Oh, I wasn't here, I don't know. Asked him, 8:00 AM, 24, and I gave that, Monday, 29, 9:00 AM, I don't know.
I asked the mayor, I'm sure he knows who gave him the information.
2500 Mr. Kuport sent, was open records responsible for the receiver's office. I think he was answering the receiver's office open records request, which happened to be the same open records request as we just...
So, the receiver answered the open records request about my email?
I don't know about your email, about this email, about the open records question you referred to, I know it was before answered. Now, I don't know what email you referred to.
You don't know which one? Okay, I'll let you know.
So, if it was in the hand, but you told me before it was on the receiver, that not on the receiver's.
So, the receiver handles open records requests too? Right?
I don't know, my agency, yes, we have our open records officer.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Chief, can you elaborate on Resolution 37, authorize independent due diligence reviews of city health and benefits programs and risk transfer program? Can you explain?
Yes, what we're trying to do is, we have our current insurance company that does our liability insurance and our healthcare, but we don't actually have an audit of that, so we're asking this independent company to audit those sections of the insurance. We just need a third party to review the company. We've been with Connor Strong for at least eight, nine years, so we need someone to review and audit their stuff. So, from people that have retired, people that are on benefits, family members, so we have to have that audit every now and then, so that's what this is for.
Okay, and will that audit also be, I guess, part of that conversation with the audit, will that go to the HR and Appointments Committee?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yeah, that absolutely will. Once that, once that comes back, that's, first place it's going to go.
Okay.
So, Mr. Solicitor, can I talk to you after this meeting about the Freedom of Information Act?
Ready to know?
Yes.
Regarding R39, Lenai Electric, I see it's street light maintenance and repair only. So, if they're to do other electrical work on our behalf, there's another fee scheduled for that?
Yes, there is.
Are we looking to get a contract with an electrician for all other work, or we're just going to...
Yes, we are.
Okay, very well.
The electrician RFP is under draft right now, and we hopefully will have that before you guys soon.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Green, do you have anything further?
Any other questions for council?
Not at this current moment, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a question because one was asked of me in regard to who was hired, were there any people from the City of Chester hired for the project that is going, taking place at Memorial Park? Can anybody answer?
That's a stormwater project.
That's a stormwater project.
You can contact stormwater.
So, no one in the city would know if anyone was hired from the city?
Because they have contractors.
Right, I know they have contractors, but were any...
But they would, they would be able to, I can't answer you. They would, if you called the office, they could answer you.
Okay.
This is a stormwater project.
Yes, anything from the directors or those in attendance?
They just went out for a management services, go to operation of Memorial Park Swimming Pool, it's table in it.
That's a question you can talk to me about. Yes.
So, you're saying everything that you want to go in and add, add to the question?
It may, it may go on Penn Bid, we're not sure yet.
Where?
Penn Bid.
Uh, current, Summer Food Program, is that you bid, or...
More than likely you, but we'll discuss that. We don't have all the details on that yet either.
Anyone else have any questions?
Can anybody tell us about the new faces we're seeing around here in City Hall? I walked in, there were some new people, so, anybody have any information?
Yes, please, I also second that question. It's a lot, lot of new hires. What's going on?
I won't say a lot of new hires, but, I mean, we get, there's been some personnel changes, absolutely, yes. So, we'll start from the first floor up. So, in the main lobby, we had a new lady start to fill Ms. Elam's previous position that was been vacant. However, we still haven't filled that, but the ladies that we will have covering the front desk are coming from Maturity Works to help us out with managing the front desk, so they're not new hires for us, they're just on loan with Maturity Works. And we will have one lady covering the morning shift and one covering the afternoon shift. So, you'll see two new faces down at the main lobby to support Officer McLean down there. Moving on the same floor, Mr. Tajir Lewis is no longer the project manager, he's now under finance, working as the purchasing and procurement agent, so he's going to take on that role. We need someone in that role right now because we have about 12 to 13 RFPs that are pending, and we need someone to get these things moving across the finish line, so we feel that he's the best candidate for that, so we moved him over to take on that role. Now, as far as new hires, we have one new hire, is Mr. Sieng Chen. He's backfilling Tajir in the project manager. He comes with over 10 years of project management experience, and he'll be taking on that role that was effective today. There is one new clerk that started today in LNI, and she's just backfilling a position that was vacant, and I don't remember her name off the top of my head, but she just started today. So, those are the only two new hires that I'm aware of.
Do you think it's important for council to know about these changes that are being made so that we can make ourselves familiar with these individuals that are coming in? I mean, to come into a workplace where you don't know who they are, it's kind of startling, don't you think? I mean, we talk about transparency and communication, but there is no communication when it comes to council. Are we not included in those decisions, or we don't have a part in those decisions? Can somebody help me understand that?
Yeah, you don't have a part in that decision.
Okay, well, that should be known, that should have been told to us so that we're not assuming, because when the public comes into the elected officials, they're asking us questions, and we can't answer them, so who do they go to?
Well, that's been discussed several times with council, even with the Supreme Court hearing, that hiring and firing.
I'm not trying to, I'm not asking to hire anybody, but...
As far as changes goes, yes, we are, this just happened today, and that is a conversation that we were planning on extending to you all to let you know. Again, as far as when they start and things like that, if that's what you want, I can do that.
No, I'm not concerned about when they start, just, or when they end, or anybody for that matter, but I'm just asking for a little bit of conversation to take place. Hey, we just hired some folks, this is where they're going to be going, so that even if we had questions to ask them, we would know who they are.
So, those, we're having a conversation today, they just started. So, the two new, the two new hires...
Thank you for the information.
The two new hires just started today.
Beforehand, sir?
What was, what was the, what's the role, I guess, I met her today when I went over there, the young lady in LNI, what is the role that she's now filling?
It was, it was a clerk position, so she'll be doing the files, the, I'm not sure exactly where Judy's going to utilize her at and what capacity, but the title of the position is a clerk position, and they're interchangeable, so some may work on pre-sales, some may work on the file structure setup, setting appointments, so they kind of fluctuate in different areas.
And that was, that was a position that was posted on the city's website?
Yes.
Okay, and then my second question I have is about Mr. Tajir. Do you know how much experience that he has as a purchasing agent?
He has very little, if any. His experience is more so he has handled some APs, account payable, in his previous role, but instead of, we just giving him another opportunity in that role. We believe that he can take it on, we're going to give him additional support, support there, and some training, but we think he can handle that capacity.
Okay, so, with that being said, Chief, you and I have conversations, I have conversations with a lot of people in City Hall, I'm somebody that likes to see things from all angles, and it's confusing to me how we give certain individuals in City Hall opportunities to grow and expand, and then we cut others off at the knees, and it's like, I don't even think they're prepared or ready for this position, they don't get a chance, opportunity to prove themselves, and I just want to understand, like, where exactly that process of thinking is coming from when it comes to moving people in new roles, or hiring and firing somebody? Like, what's, like, what's the process that whoever is involved in these decisions, what's the process that goes into that process of thinking? Because some people aren't qualified enough to get these positions, and then other people don't have the experience, but they can have the opportunity and get the chance to, so where exactly does that fall under the decision-making process going on in City Hall? Because I just like to understand.
That's a good question. So, I would say a couple of different things. Each individual person, we have to base them on their own unique skill sets and talents. I'm a firm believer that the people that we have here, if we can keep them and put them in another role to preserve them and help them, the last thing I ever want to do is terminate someone. So, if ever there's an opportunity for a staff person that's internal, that we can adjust them or move them to another role, I would explore that option. But if they've refused, they don't want that position, or we feel that they don't have that capability to handle that, and there's no other options, then that's where the option comes in, that we have to let them go. I wouldn't say cut them off at the knees, I know that's just a term you use, but I want you to know that there is careful thought and consideration that goes into each person. I look at the people, I look at the job, and I always look at it from a personal standpoint. I, the last thing I want to do is terminate someone, but that's, that's the concept, that's where, how I look at it. And it's not just my own arbitrary decision, I look at and have a conversation with the supervisor, HR, and receiver, sometimes the mayor, depending on what the position is, and I take all those things into consideration before a decision is made.
Okay.
But there's some individual ones you want to talk about, we can discuss them.
Okay, I mean, I'm not trying to make this a very individual, specific conversation, but if you're going to, if we are going to exclude the Supreme Court and the receiver and everybody decided that we're going to exclude, not mayor, council as a whole, just council, from the hiring and firing, then there has to be some type of wiggle room where they're involved in the different moving pieces that are happening. Like, that's not hiring and firing at all, like, we're not trying to hire or fire anybody, but if the people are going to be moved around all over the place in City Hall, that's a conversation that I feel that we should be a part of, because now it's like, now it's exclude council from everything, like, literally everything, like, we're not, we're not involved in hiring and firing, we're not involved in people moving positions, we're not involved in, if people are comfortable here in City Hall, like, if they're even happy doing the job that we're paying them to do, like, we're not involved in anything. So, it's like, how can we be supportive of our community, because City Hall is our community, and we don't know a single thing that's going on?
Again, if we can just...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, this is a question for the role.
No, you're not, no, you're not. But it goes back to the whole conversation, again, the separation of bodies. You guys are the legislative body, you're not the administrative body, you don't have convers, you're not involved with personnel matters. This is what, this is what this whole thing came about, you're the legislative arm of the city. So, getting you guys involved with personnel matters is not what you do. In the charter, it talks about appointments. So, that's one thing I've been going to the receiver about, if there's a position that's supposed to be appointed, I'm telling him, I'm fighting him on the same side. If it's an appointed position, it needs to go to council, it's that simple. You don't have the ultimate authority. If it's appointed according to the charter, that's where council weighs in. Anything outside of an appointment, I'm not going to ask your, not out of disrespect, but out of the separation of duties. It's an administrative function, it's a personnel matter, and you're not included in that, you're not. But if it's an appointed position, absolutely, and I respect that, I respect the charter, and again, it's not out of disrespect to you guys, it's not. Separation of my, separation of duties. So, you may not agree with some of the personnel changes, you may not, but I go before Labor, the Labor Council, so if there's anything with the union, I got to clear it through legal, I got to clear it through the Labor Council to make sure that it's done, through the three different unions, where the, the union presidents, the union heads, so any, anything dealing with a non-bargaining matter, it's not just me, it's legal, and it's the union presidents. If it's non-bargaining, then at that point in time, it's strictly between legal, HR, if it's a legal issue, I'm going to include legal in it, in HR. So, it's not just arbitrarily me just making that decision, I take all those things into consideration.
Thank you.
If I were to chime in on that, you know, I think of, as legislators in our council roles, I think of someone like a Senator John Kane, or a state rep, Carol Kazim. I am more than certain that they don't get involved in who the next clerk is up at the state capitol, or cafeteria worker, or, you know, director up there. It's just personnel matters, just legislators do not concern themselves with. This is not Harrisburg, this is the City of Chester. So, as councilpeople, I understand the need and the desire to know who the working parts are here in city government, because we're all here, we're close, we're one small group of, you know, 200 employees. So, the questions that need to be asked are the ones that you're asking today, like, you know, who was brought on board this week, who was let go this week? I mean, to the extent that, you know, those questions are answered, asked and answered, they should be. But we're no longer directors, you know, we don't run departments, we're not concerned with the personnel, to the point that we're hiring or making those decisions. That role has been left to the chief of staff, and there's, there couldn't be a better name for that title, chief of the staff, like, in charge of the staff, that's that role. Speaking of appointments, I'm not sure we're quite clear, and, Mr. Solicitor, I might need your help on this one, because I think we've talked about the appointments to boards, but I just want to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. So, board appointments, somebody help me, how did we say we were going to handle these? We're going to refer them to the, you know, the committee to appoint, or are the applicants going to go straight to the agenda for us to vote on?
We said we were going to send them to the committee, the HR, an appointment, the appointment committee, they were going to go there.
Okay, so there's no need for, when every application comes in, there's no need to be sending it out to all council persons, it just starts with the committee?
No, we did say that in there, and that we're going to send it out to all council members for review, but it had to go to the committee for them to have that open discussion, and then make a vote to whether they're going to move it forward favorably to council as a whole.
Gotcha, okay, that's the part. Everybody, you got that?
Yes.
I was just going to ask, I remember in that conversation, we're saying, what if there's only one name, are we still going to refer just one name to a committee, or would that potentially...
Absolutely, straight to the committee. We're not bypassing, if that's what we agreed on, that it's going to the committee, if it's one name, it's going to the committee. That's what we have our committees for. And we don't want someone sitting, because you may get one name this month, and you may not get another name to the following month, so we need to fill these positions. So, that's my thought.
The conversation was also that we were to automatically fill any seats that were required, I guess, like, by law for the city to have, like, so some committees were required to be in operation that haven't been, so we have somebody that... So we have somebody that is coming in for that specific role. And there's only one application, would they not be put, when, then we agreed that they would just be pushed automatically forward to keep us within compliance?
Push, push forward right to council?
Right to, I guess, what you, agreeing with what you said, the committee?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Right to the committee, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
Um, I do have a question. I did, I got an email from Chester High School in STEM. And they are wondering if the city is going to provide their annual trip to DC. I know, uh, and for the last probably 10 years, 10, 12 years, Councilwoman Williams provided a trip to, uh, for all the graduating seniors to DC. And so they are asking if you guys are doing that, um, trip this year.
I...
That's not in our budget.
I, I, I don't know. I can't answer that. I'd have to look to see where the money came from in the previous years. I, I can look to see where the money came from in the previous years to see if there's money available for that, but I don't know about that program.
Did you hear that, councilman?
No, I didn't hear that. Say that again, please?
Chief Lightner, um, explained that he would have to look to see where the money was coming from in pre- previous years and how this program was running, to see if, uh, the city of Chester could now afford it currently.
Okay.
Cause I, as of right now, it seems as though that trip would, that would not be in the budget. Like, that's not something that was even, it seems like known about. So it would have to be reviewed and see where the money would come from, basically. Did I explain that?
Okay.
So if I can have clarity, so it's a senior trip? So you guys know about this? Alright, let me check with the staff and we'll look at it and I'll see what we can do.
Tell me more. I, I've never heard of this program. The full, the full class, the...
No, it's not the full class. It's the, it's, so when I was a senior at STEM, it's for all the seniors who are academically eligible, eligible and are not on any disciplinary action from the school. Like, it's a list of things you have to meet in order to qualify to go on a trip. So it was like, yes, to break it down simplistically, A and B students can't have been suspended or kicked out at any point in time or caused any type of disruption where they thought as though you were a liability on the trip. So it, it wind up breaking down to unfortunately in Chester, like 100 students or from both schools or something like that. But since 2015, it's been, it's been around. I went, I was, you know, good student. For us, it was the Blacks and Wax Museum in Washington DC.
And then they took them all to Golden Corral.
I got a box lunch, I didn't go to Golden Corral.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they, they was taking them to Golden Corral, yeah.
Well, I, I had never heard of that program, obviously. It didn't require council approval. I don't think that's something that she did. Okay. She can still do it. If that's what she did, we're not stopping her from doing it. I mean, to ask if the city's doing it on her behalf, I think is what I'm hearing?
No, it's if the city is gonna be a sponsor, not on her behalf, but if the city is gonna continue to sponsor. She just happened to be with the city and the city sponsored it. So they wanna know if the city is gonna sponsor again this year.
The Parks and Recreation Department, uh, they did it every year. It came through the Parks and Recreation Department. Even when I was working for City Hall, um, you know, I went with them on the trip. And it was through the Parks and Recreation Department.
Yeah, I hear you. I mean, I, I was a director in Parks and Rec, that wasn't in the budget, but it, it happened, it, it happened.
She was always here, she wasn't here, it's like, oh, man, God.
Are we gonna acknowledge any of the students that are graduating? Like, how, how is the city gonna participate with acknowledging the seniors of Chester High School? You know, our great basketball and football teams, both on girls and the boys. They've, they've earned some kind of recognition, or they should receive some kind of recognition from the city because of their, um, graduating. That's important to them. So are we gonna even acknowledge or, or can we go to the graduation? Can, can we participate in some way to show those children that we support them?
We always go to the graduation.
Will all of us know that we've been, what, I'm just asking?
And if there's any information that comes in to me that's addressed to council, I mean, I'd never hesitate to send it to you. But like that type of stuff, I don't get those invites. Like, that wouldn't come to me. That would go directly to the mayor.
Uh, Claudia Avaret normally will send out the invitation to Denise Standback. And she will have someone from the district drop off tickets for all of council.
Yeah.
She'll drop off tickets.
Yeah, if Ms. Standback gets it, she'll, she'll let me know. We'll make sure you guys get it. But other than that, I, like, I'm not on the, like, I'm not on those invites. But if we get it, we'll make sure you get it.
Thank you so much.
But that's only half your question. You're asking if we should recognize...
Yes, I think we should.
You wanna put something together as a recognition?
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm saying as a city, these are our kids. Like, we rally behind them for everything else.
No, I think you, I'm not sure if you're asking, is there something in place, or you wanna put something in place?
Is there something in place to acknowledge the graduating class of 2024 Chester High? Yes, I'm asking.
I mean, what, what, hold on. What do we mean by acknowledge? What, I mean, to, I don't know what you mean by acknowledge. To name them all?
Oh, we not name them all? Will we show off to them? Will we, will we attend the graduation and...
So that satisfies your acknowledgement?
Yes, I mean, yes, it does. It would.
Just trying to understand.
What we've always done in the past is have, like, over in the park across the street, we had a little graduation celebration, like graduation night. You know, they have, um, we, we have refreshments and what have you over in the park, you know? And the kids would come by.
Because they don't have anywhere to go after they graduate.
Alright, well, hold on. Now that's something different. Are we scheduling an event in the park?
No, I didn't say that. I said in the past, we had always done something, an acknowledgement for the kids that graduated. That's what I was saying.
Normally, the city sponsors a graduation party on graduation night. And it's held after graduation in Ethel Waters Park.
Right.
So is that being scheduled this year? That's what I'm trying to understand.
We don't have that, that's why we asking you guys. Or bringing it to the attention of council and the chief of staff and the ones who make the decision for even touches that.
Obviously, there's nothing scheduled. Is this council gonna try to put something together for the students? Is that what we're saying?
I will be happy to, uh, collab- collaborate with any members on council on supporting our graduating classes with, I guess, whatever event is going on at the Waters Park. I know that usually people in the city ride around honking their horns, celebrating, riding out the windows with the caps and gowns. That's a little unsafe, even though I was a part of that. I did it because it's Chester tradition, but it's unsafe. Um, so I think it's important that we have somewhere, a general location for everyone to go safely. We can be canceled, as whatever case may be, and know, listen, celebrate your graduation here safely. And what you do when you leave here is you and your family's business. However, the city of Chester would like to recognize your graduating, four years of education from Chester High, STEM Academy, wherever. And go about, so I don't think that's gonna be hard to plan, and I'll be happy to collaborate with anybody to plan it. It's, it'll take us two days, I, I promise.
And we can use your budget.
Um, chief of staff, is there, um, some funding in the specially events fund to help, um, sponsor this? And al- also, we have to keep in mind that this will also, um, calls for additional, um, police officers to be. They normally have police officers there as well.
So the answer to your question, there is, we'll make some money available, but the question is how much are you guys talking?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Are you, are you speaking into a mic?
I, I am. Can you hear me?
Okay. Okay, I can hear you better now.
I said, there's money in there. We'll make, we'll make some money available. The question is, I need a budget to know how much. You guys are talking about spending, so we can, um, appropriate those, those funds and set those aside. But, um, other than that, I mean, we, we can make some, some money available.
Okay.
Now, as far as staff...
Can, um, I don't, if we all can set up a, a meeting to discuss this and go over detail and, uh, event logistics, um, that would be good. I'm not sure if Councilman Davis or Councilwoman Gibson would like to take that initiative. Um, but if we can set up some kind of meeting, so that way we can, cause I think, I'm not sure what day graduation is. But I know it's sometime in June, so we probably wanna get on it soon, so we can begin to prepare for it.
Um, yeah, councilman, I think very simply, we can go to both high schools, Chester High, STEM, find out exactly how many numbers of seniors are graduating. Get that calculation, divide that number by how many burgers and hot dogs we might need, chips, sodas. Get the budget, bring in the budget to Chief Lightner, see if it'll get approved. We can, I'll go to the store myself, pick up the items. I can get tables, I can get a DJ, my frat brother will take care of that. It's not gonna be hard to plan, as long as the people are in charge that, or in charge of the money and everything. We just bring it to, they're presented to them, however we present it to them, and then get the, uh, get the thing rolling. It's not, it's not something hard. We don't have to have a formal meeting about it. I think it's gonna waste people's time, especially if they don't wanna be in the meeting. So it, it's something that you and I, whoever else wants to help with this initiative can get done within a two to three day time period, max.
I'll do the shopping portion of it.
We'll get it done, councilman. There's no problem.
Only thing I need is a quote. Just give me a quote. Yeah, I just need a quote and I can get the money set aside. The other thing I need to know too is where, because if you're gonna need staff, are we gonna have to block off streets, overtime?
Well, that would be the part where we'll just look at, uh, years prior, and it's always been at the Waters Park. I don't see why it should be a problem to have it at the Waters Park again, since it's been there.
You do need staff.
Staff? Oh, well, I don't have, I don't, I'm not, I don't have the authority to go about staffing. It's a little above my pay grade.
We got you. We got, we, we'll make it work.
Okay.
I just need to, I just need to know how many bodies I need to have available.
I'll, I'll go to the school and get the exact number of graduating seniors and...
We'll go from there. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, so we've created a group that will have something from city to acknowledge our seniors. I know I tried to do a Ethel Waters, you know, keeping the tradition together, afternoon party after graduation. Nobody showed up. So time of day is gonna be important. I think these, uh, young people would prefer to be coming out at night. And at night, you're gonna have to consider lights and, and those things as well. They certainly did not wanna see a day party. So just keep that in mind. And also consider other locations, because I just don't think Ethel Waters Park is a, is a great location to bring a lot of people only because of parking and...
So should we do it here at City Hall in the community room?
I'm just saying, think of alternatives other than Ethel Waters Park. I mean, consider it, but I, I just know logistically getting in and out and parking, if you're looking for a lot of people, it's, it's a tough place to get in and out of.
I think, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to collaborate with some of our businesses on the waterfront, like the stadium. They have ample amount of parking space, uh, venue, you know? Have different conversations with people to see how we can make this celebration with our seniors very special and unique. So, Councilwoman, I have no problem going out in the community and talking to anybody about trying to push something healthy and positive for our seniors.
Neither do I.
Yep, so we good, yeah, no problem. Soccer stadium can contribute something to City of Chester anywhere.
There or somebody will.
Alright, good. Anybody else? Questions? Hey, so? Come on up.
Uh, Cypress Dean Simpson, 1030 Potter Street, Chester, PA. The fire company doesn't have any, um, smoke detectors. And I was trying to figure out, are we, uh, the city kinda like responsible for that? Or how does that work? Because the captain just told me he doesn't know when they're gonna get any. So I don't know. I just wanted to know if, you know, how...
Well, fortunately, we have our fire commissioner here. If I, I may speak on smoke detectors, as he explained to me, I think, uh, you guys usually get a grant for smoke detectors. And after the fire, I think last year, they got wiped out and they're waiting for a new grant. So correct me if I'm wrong.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, you are correct. We did receive a grant. It was in either 2020 or 2021 where we received, I think it was close to 3,000 smoke detectors. And then there was a fire in Philadelphia where there was a significant loss of life. And then like a week or two later, there was another fire in New York City with a significant loss of, loss of life. We distributed most of our smoke detectors during that two-week period to a majority of the city. We are out. We do have money, um, some money set aside for fire prevention. But we also, out of that fire prevention budget, we purchased coloring books, you know, the fire helmets for the kids. We are looking to get another grant. We also work with Red Cross and Channel 6 News, which does smoke detector giveaways. But yes, currently at this time, we do not have any smoke detectors for public distribution.
Any idea when we may get some, or...
We're, we're in the process of working on it. I, I do, and I cannot give you a date at this time.
Is it something that we replenish on a regular basis?
We've always had smoke detectors to give out. In previous years, the numbers were limited. It was what we got from Channel 6 News, and then basically when we distributed them and we ran out, that was it. But again, we did receive a grant through FEMA for this. And we are, we, we are in the, we are going to be in the process of submitting for a grant again. When you look at FEMA grants, there's a couple of different categories. One of them is the assistance firefighter grants with firefighter safety, uh, fire prevention grants. We currently have a grant for fire prevention that we haven't used, that we're gonna be using this year. And my grant coordinator stated that it probably wouldn't be a good idea to submit for another fire prevention grant, being the fact that we haven't exhausted the funds for a current fire prevention grant. It would basically, they're gonna say, why are we giving you more money when you haven't spent the money that we already got you? And the fire prevention grant that we currently have, uh, part of the grant money is to buy equipment for fire inspectors and investigators. And then the other part is for, uh, I think I was discussing with you this morning, placards. In the fire code, there's placards that are, can be placed on vacant buildings. So when a firefighter shows up at 2:00 in the morning and that vacant building, you know, might not have a floor, that placard sits on the outside of the building and says, hey, you know, this is not a safe building to, to go into. So it's gonna, you know, increase the safety of our firefighters when they respond to the buildings, but, um, no.
So none of the remaining money for fire prevention can be used to purchase?
No, this, this grant's specific on what the budget items are, and, and none of that includes smoke detectors. But we are working on different angles, again, through Red Cross, through 6 ABC News to get them. Unfortunately, it's just, we do not have them to give out to the public at this time.
So you said it because of a tragedy of another community, we gave our smoke detectors to another community?
No, 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 no. Not at all.
Cause I'm like, you're giving our stuff away to someone else?
No, 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 no.
I, I need some clarity on that.
So we actually, we do not give smoke detectors to anyone outside of the city of Chester. We actually had people come in from Chester Township, from Brookhaven. And part of the grant auditing, auditing process, um, we have to keep track of what smoke detectors we gave out, what addresses we gave them out to. And anyone who came in and said, you know, I live in Chester Township, like, well, I'm sorry, we can't give you the smoke detector, so...
Alright, hold on, Commissioner.
Yes.
As you go down these rabbit holes. What he was saying was as a result of a tragedy in New York and Philadelphia, Chester people came to the fire department and wiped out their supply of smoke detectors.
Yeah, they realized, they were like, oh, my God.
I've heard this story before, that's why I...
Thank you.
Yeah, no, 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 we do, I'm not giving out, Philadelphia and New York City, they, they got a lot of money.
I was confused. Thank you for the clarification.
Nope, no, 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 I was just, it, because of the coverage in the news, it really woke a lot of people up to making sure that they had working smoke detectors in their property.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So one of the things we would wanna do as a, as a council, especially when budget season comes around, is to see to it that we can add a few dollars to the budget, so that we can have smoke detectors on a regular basis, at least some amount of smoke detectors, a base amount, that our fire department can always have, at least starting the year on hand.
Yeah, and unfortunately, due to the fact that there are a lot of renters here in the city, it's actually the landlord's responsibility to put those smoke detectors in the, the, the dwellings. And we do have a lot of people come in, none of I just, cause their, their landlords aren't helping them out at all. No, no, I, I own the place and... place and, you know, so I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of the smoke detectors that we handed out went into rental properties that it should have been the responsibility of the, the property owner, not the, the tenants.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, Mr. Commissioner, do, uh, does the fire department still do, uh, carbon monoxide detectors as well?
Yes, the smoke detectors that we actually, actually purchased through that grant program were combination smoke, carbon monoxide detectors. So, um, I do believe the only thing we have left over from that grant are bed shakers, which are those for, are hearing impaired, um, we can, we, we still have some of those that will basically alert the hearing impaired while they sleep. Those I think we do still have left over from the grant, but the actual regular, just normal smoke, carbon monoxide detectors, we are out of.
Gotcha, thank you.
We have any training coming up for our firefighters?
Yes, one, uh, one of the grants, an, an additional grant with the assistance of firefighter grants is, um, safety and we are going to be purchasing, they're called firefighter bailout systems, it's basically a harness with a fifty foot piece of rope that we can attach and if, you know, the room that you're in is on fire and we have to get out of that room rapidly, we can basically hook that onto the window, jump out the window and rappel down safely. Uh, we're going to be executing that grant, we're just now starting to speak with the vendor to get a, a, a quote on the equipment and part of the grant is for equipment, the other part is for training, so that is training that the, the entire department is going to be getting, and, and they're also going to be issued these, these bailout harnesses.
And they're being made aware of training that we, you know, any training that would be beneficial to them on their job in their current ser- situation.
Well, for the...
And to help them advance as well.
Yes, so the, the bailout system itself, that will be, every platoon, every member gets trained on it because they're going to be issued that piece of equipment and any time we issue a firefighter a new piece of equipment, they're trained on that. As far as any other type of education, one of the holdups this year was that we had, and the construction has just been completed with the remodeling of Station eighty-two for the privacy quarters for the females, so we have our training room back that was being used as a bunk room and we're in the process right now, scheduling the twenty twenty four training and then through the contract that we have with Bucks County Community College, any resident courses or online courses are open to anyone and every member of the department is free to submit an application and I endorse it so that they're able to attend those trainings.
You mentioned the, um, the smoke detectors, I'm still stuck on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, it's supposed to be on the landlords and then my question would be for Ms. Judy, uh, when the houses get inspected, do they have a, a list to check off if this says that they have a smoke detector in their home? Because...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
I think we're finished. All right, this meeting is adjourned.